Barbara said, "We can tell when y'all looking at your phones." She said, "I regret it." So I leave mine upstairs, because the minute it does something, you're so tempted to look down at it. So I just leave them both upstairs.
The top clock's right.
Okay, so Brazos County Commissioner's Court will meet in workshop session. August 21st, 2:00 PM, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue. First item is called order, and the second is presentation and discussion of the county budget. Capital projects, special revenue funds, grant funds, debt service, proprietary funds, and general fund.
Good afternoon, highs everyone today. Hopefully you had a good weekend and stayed nice and cool. I'm glad I could crack a joke. And this afternoon, we're going to go over the special revenues, capital funds, as well as grants, and we're going to try to entertain y'all as we're going through. First of all, we're going to go ahead and do capital projects that are not completed, that they started either this year and previous years, and they're still ongoing. And so these funds are, the remaining funds will have to roll over into the next year, and then plus some. The first one is going to, please, if you have any questions, department heads, if you have any questions, please raise your hand, let me know, and that way we could take your questions and concerns. For the county judge, they requested a software this past year, or this year regarding open record requests. That project is still being worked out, 13,400. ARPA revenue replacement funds, this is the unspent funding or unallocated money for projects. It's 6,162,254, 654. Special response vehicle storage and central receiving building. And this project is underway. 1,746,000 will be rolling over to next year with additional funding, making it 3,134,000. The fleet shop has requested a vehicle, and it's going to be a replacement vehicle, white Tahoe, as a reserve, just in case something happens to another one during the year. The vehicle has arrived, and so the only thing that we need a budget for next year is equipment, 10,000. Facility services, as well as a vehicle replacement for them. It was a truck, it was ordered back in 2023. For 2023, it has yet to arrive, so we're going to have to roll the funds for next year. BISD building renovations, this is again an ARPA revenue replacement project. We are rolling 9,445,573 dollars over. The sheriff's office, the courthouse security enhancement, if you've been over to the courthouse security, or courthouse, their project is underway. We're hoping for it to be completed this year, but there's that what if, depending on some items that are still lagging. We're going to budget $250,000, as well as FY 2023 vehicle replacements that have not arrived. It's several Tahos, and so we're going to have to roll that amount over, as well as equipment that has not arrived as well, at 175,000. The command center upgrades and replacements, there's several parts that have not arrived yet that we're counting for hopefully at the end of the year, October, between October, November, 4,061. These next three items are going to be additional and additional replacement items, trucks, that we have ordered this year, because the order date was back in July. And so they'll come in hopefully this next year. And they're going to be replacing one animal truck and two patrol trucks. For the next item, it's going to be the jail. We have additional Tahos that have not yet arrived. I think it's two of them, we're going to have to roll, three of them. We're going to have to roll 75,367. And some of this is either the equipment or the vehicles that have not arrived. For Constable III, it was proposed to replace the canine unit due to the miles on it. And that vehicle has arrived, we're just needing to roll over the equipment that has not arrived yet at $10,000. The medical examiner building, this is going to be revenue replacement funds, 4,605,896 dollars. The equipment shed at Roden Bridge, court approved this project this year, it's underway. We're going to roll 287,000 over, as well as several units that have not arrived at the Roden Bridge. There are going to be several trucks, as well as equipment, which is 176,200 dollars. New capital projects, this is what is in the proposed budget to date. We're going to start commissioners' court. Their first one is going to be commissioners' court contingency. Every year, we budget $4 million for the what ifs, either property that needs to be purchased, or vehicles, not vehicles, or items that come over budget. This is where we take the funds to support the increases. Replacement vehicles, $600,000. Due to the way we have to order the vehicles every single year, sometimes you have to order a year, or several months before the new year starts, this is the funding that we take from, as well as if we have wrecked vehicles, damaged vehicles, we use this little avenue to help support it. For the courtroom audio visual refresh, at 121,500. As we're sitting in this room, sometimes it's hard to view what's on the screen, or hear, or see. So we went ahead and budgeted $129,500 for a refresh in this courtroom. The civil district courtroom build out, due to what Governor Abbott had announced last week, we're going to have to create a new court. And so this is going to be a renovation of the old courtroom over at the courthouse. We budgeted $1 million. Emergency communication district building, also known as 911. We know that this might be coming in the near future, and so we went ahead and budgeted $5 million. For the fleet, there's additional Tahos, going to be silver. We're not able to order this one until I think November, but it's in the budget for 64,000. This is going to be a reserve, just in case something happens to one of the sheriff's office. Election administration, they have requested a training room audio visual upgrade due to the training that they have been performing over there, $40,000. IT, Odyssey SQL server upgrade at 44,950, as well as the BISD building connectivity and health district fiber relocation at 31,100. We're double checking on this project to see if it's budgeted elsewhere, and if so, then this amount would be decreased. The courthouse digital signage, this is a new project at $129,226. Facility services, fire and safety maintenance software. And this will help facility services keep track of fire extinguishers, certain things, as they put into the system, to help to remind them when they need to update items, 6,300. This next tool is a tool that they're able to stick down, I think a pipe, to locate certain items. I think it's a camera, at 6,500. Exterior access stairs for the health department, buses, center, and juvenile center. This will allow emergency, not emergency, allow for facility services to be able to get to the roof outside, as well as going to have a winch, so they are able to winch up certain items to the roof. The next item is going to be sheriff's office vehicle replacements. This one is going to be a Tahoe for 64,000, as well as a gel mower replacement for work crew, $10,000. Constable III, a design of evidence room for 10,000. This is going to be feasibility study, or design, help us design architect to see where we can build it, or if we can renovate an extension to the building. Juvenile services is to replace a vehicle, 31,000. Expansion of the expo complex at 7.5 million. The Brazos Center training room, 102 sound system upgrade. The system in this room is part of the new building, a part of the existing building, so 44,100. County records management has requested three scanners, but to date, it was two scanners for current position and one scanner for additional position. We're only going to budget for two scanners for the current position, positions. Roden Bridge Capital, this is for replacement of a vehicle at 29,000. Between those two line items that we discussed, rolling project as well as new capital projects, it comes down to be 44, 43,698,133 dollars. If you scroll down just a little bit more, before we get to those items, let's look at the projects that are not in the proposed budget.
Before we move on to that, okay, the three items that are restricted fund balance.
Could you speak into the mic, please, Commissioner?
Yeah, the three items that are restricted fund balance. How much of that do we already have that's transferred? Okay, so those three items add up to be the transfer from general fund amount?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, not all of it, that's going to be.
Those three items add up to 20,214,123 dollars.
That can only be used for those three projects.
Okay, and maybe later on, when we get to debt service, we'll talk about what of these are debt service eligible, and what we have cash on hand from, from reserves, right?
And debt service, or NCS?
Okay.
Projects that are not in the proposed budget. Risk management fire extinguisher simulator, 16,000. IT, and again, these are either party ones, that wouldn't see the need for at this moment, or party twos and threes. For IT firewall, high availability license conversion and software at 13,790, this is a priority two. Palo Alto panorama, 13,560, priority two. Website governance tools, 9,000, priority two. Backup storage refresh, 52,000, priority two. AV managed services, this is going to be a contract service that went to priority three at 93,000. Zero trust internet, 49,000, out of priority three. Facility services, requested $200,000 for additional items at the Highway 21 property for improvements. A tractor with cab for landscaping, this would be additional to the fleet, 60,000. A 12-foot wing mower for landscaping, 25,000. And three additional vehicles that are a party two, that we have set down with Ken, with fleet management, and we could wait another year to purchase these. For county attorney, this was a priority two, we can last another year on replacement on this vehicle for 31,000. For sheriff's administration, the same thing for the next three vehicles, they could wait another year, and so this was a priority two. The sheriff's office requested this item on their own, it was a crime scene investigation van replacement at 60,000. Constable III, patrol Tahoe, this is JP Ingram's unit at 64,000, as well as a reserve patrol that could be priority two at 64,000. Constable IV, this one's a priority two, to replace this unit at 64,000. The expo center broom sweeper, this would be additional to the fleet, at 81,000. Roden Bridge replacement motivator, this was a priority three at 353,700. Going back to the broom sweeper, I know this, last month, we had a fender bender, and we're still waiting for insurance claims to see if it's going to be totaled, so we might have to purchase a broom sweeper as we move throughout this process to replace it. That is telling 1.5 million for projects that are not added to the proposed budget to this, at this date. You want to go through the other funds, like 1,143? Let's go to the next tab.
Go where? Next tab, or other capital project funds?
Label's wrong. That was not capital. Those are.
Yeah, I'm going to have to do two.
Special revenues. Okay. Changing, did anybody have any questions on capital that we need to address before we move on?
Just like I said before, where are we relative to? Because, I mean, some of this money from restricted funds, we've got the money from ARPA replacement or whatever. And then, so I guess, what are we looking at as far as transfers beyond the restricted to ARPA fund balances from the reserves to general funds? I saw the $19 million figure there. That's it, net of what we already have on hand?
That's what Nina's saying, y'all?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Special revenues, y'all may or may not be aware that the legislature has, lots of times, assesses fees, or at our request, assesses fees, that can only be used for specific purposes. And the commissioners' court has a responsibility for monitoring those funds, as well as budgeting them. The first one up is hotel occupancy tax. And we have budgeted, there are reserves rolling forward of at least a million. There are actually more than that, but that's all we needed to balance the budget, for a total for the fund of 4,300,000. That's going to cover, you'll notice, there's also 638,000 in capital outlay, so that will help fund some of the repairs and maintenance items that have come up with expo, particularly the columns. I think we found that we need to rust proof and paint, I'm going to just go with that. The next one is unclaimed property funds, which is actually, anything under, anything sent to unclaimed funds that's less than $100 has to stay with the county treasurer. We earn interest off those unclaimed funds, and the interest is supposed to be designated to pay for the functions involved with the unclaimed property, including advertising, and any other printing, those kind of things. So we don't use this fund very often, but if we needed to, it's budgeted at 251,000. Unclaimed, whoa. Uh-oh, which one's which, Nina?
1,500.
So I just got two 13,000s? Are we skipping, no, we're skipping, we, okay, 251,000 is for state lateral roads.
This is labeled wrong.
It's labeled wrong. So the second page should be fund 12,000, state lateral road funds. We projected that we might use that last year, but we haven't. It's available for, it's budgeted at 251, if Roden Bridge needs to use it during the year. We get about 30,000 a year from the state on that, we usually save it up and spend it all at one time. The next page, 71,000 is unclaimed funds. Christian was way too happy for that minute there, thinking he had 251,000 dollars. Law library, law library, we currently use to pay for online subscriptions for LexisNexis for, I think it's still our attorneys, isn't it? I think it's still the attorneys, not always the judges. What, we had a little bit of mix up on this one, where we weren't coding the fees appropriately. And so I think we moved out the judges' expenses to the court expenses. So that one may change a little bit during the year. 77,500, local provider participation fund. Soon, very soon, we will be setting the tax rate for 23, 24 for the local provider participation fund. It is an intergovernmental transfer up to the Health and Human Services Commission. Technically, this, it's a tax that we tax the hospitals. All hospitals in the county have to participate, even if they don't accept indigent clients. We currently are expecting a fund balance of 19 million in that fund, and expecting to, well, we're budgeting 49 million to be spent next year as HHSC opens the door for transfers. So they can be, they're random, it seems, they are not consistently, any particular months, any particular amounts. Fund 1,800, excuse me, 18,000 is the law enforcement education fund. These are funds that we receive every year in February, that are to be allocated to educating and continuing education for our law enforcement. And we are anticipating reserves in that of 69,000, for a total budget of the fund of 83,860. Court records preservation fund, fund 19,000. This one is, up until the 2021 legislature, we thought erroneously that we could use those fees to fund scanning or record management, excuse me, projects for all county documents. But we found after the 2021 legislature, that we were only supposed to be using that for court documents. And so, I don't know if you remember, we moved the whole records management division out of this to fund and put it over in general fund, so that they could work on all the offices that aren't considered court-related. For example, me, y'all, tax assessor collector, things like that. Fund 20,000 is the county clerk records management fund. This is a fund that fees are used to assist the county clerk in their records management program. We have budgeted 1.6 million dollars for next year, the majority of which is 1.2 in fund balance rolling forward. County clerk archival fund, I think that that one is going to be coming up on an agenda pretty soon for her to outline her projects and program for the next year. I failed to mention also, the local provider participation fund, we'll be setting that rate in September also, so there'll be further meetings with regards to those that are not called budget workshops. They, I think we have to have a hearing.
We have a public hearing.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing on that, so. Courthouse security fund, you may have gleaned from our general fund presentation, what, this one is a little bit different than records management. We didn't determine that we were putting the fees in the, or that the fees and their intention of the fees were wrong. What we determined was that we were spending, sending over 50% of the expenditures for this fund over from the general fund. And from an accounting standpoint, they were like, the, it's actually Government Finance Officers Association said, "If you're doing that, then there's no, it's not a special revenue fund, it needs to go to the general fund." We did not want to move all these fees to the general fund, because then it could look like to an auditor, either our external or to the state, that we're not accurately accounting for those fees. So what we did was we moved out the people, the courthouse security people, moved them over to the general fund, and left the operations expenditures in fund 22,000, so that we could continue to use those fees as they were intended by the legislature. Fund 20, 22,010, justice court security fund. That one is a fee that's been, we've actually been just accumulating it, we have not spent very much on this fund at all. And we have accumulated about 208,000, we're budgeting 242,000 next year. This fund would be something that we would want to use for courtroom security at, at the courthouse? Or is it outside the courthouse?
At the courthouse, because JP.
No, I think it's the other way around. I think it can only be used on JPs that aren't in the courthouse. So JP, which, other than JP four, is all of our JPs. So we could use that, those funds to increase our security presence, or camera presence, if we wanted to. We didn't use them, because I don't know if y'all are aware, we budgeted to redo the audio video, and I think some of the cameras, isn't that right, Trevor, for the four, for the three JPs that didn't get a new building?
Just the AV.
Just the AV, okay, because we were debating on whether we should use these. If we do the cameras, this is probably where those. If we do the cameras, this is probably where those will come out of. We don't have a proposal yet. Nobody suggested that yet. It's just, that's where these would come. District clerk records management fund. That one has continued to accumulate its reserve fund balances about 200,000, expected to bring in 64,000 next year for a total budget of 264,000. District clerk archival fund, that one is the one that had some interesting things. In 2021, the fee was repealed, so the fund is non-existent anymore. It ran out of funds this year and will be removed starting next year. The Justice of the Peace Technology Fund is designed to be used to increase either education on technology items used by the Justice of the Peace or the technology items themselves, estimating a budget of 221,000 next year. County and district court technougie fund, there's a spelling issue on that one. That one is for the county and district courts, and we haven't used that one either. It's only got $129,000 in it. We, it's, it's gonna be one of those ones that we'll end up finding some project further down the road. I don't know where it's.
So there's some more technougie out there?
There is some more. There's some, I know. I was like, when you run across them, it's hard to say. That's a good point, Trevor. Do you hear him, Nina? Did you hear him? Courthouse, how much is the courthouse digital signage project?
It's 129,000.
Yeah.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Can I swipe, can I sweep that fun, Judge, for that one? A deal. It's a given. Anyway, we'll consider that. We'll take that under invite. Thank you, Trevor. There's 129 out of capital. Forfeiture fund, fund 25,000 is when, is generally the funds that are received when seized property is awarded to us and sell it, and then we sell it. And those funds are to be used by law enforcement, generally by law enforcement, sometimes county attorney and district attorney in support of their office generally. They can't be used for anything else. And that budget is based on the past year. I always estimate nothing for the new year because I have no idea what they're gonna seize, much less an idea of what the court is gonna order as, order over to us. But we have about $33,000 in there. District Attorney Hot Check Collections Fund is very similar to the County Attorney Hot Checks Collections Fund. There's about $4,950 in there. I don't remember the limit now between when it goes from county attorney to district attorney. I wanna say it's a check for $7,500. I don't know for sure. But these are for the fees that are collected with, associated with those insufficient fund checks that the district attorney prosecutes. Fund 27,000, Bell Bond Board Fund. These are the fees charged to Bell Bond companies that are used in support of that program. We don't have to use them very often. Every once in a while, we have an individual that will go out, I don't even know what he does. Christian might be able to tell you what he does. But he does some stuff. We'll go with that. Voter Registration Fund. This fund is also going away because we, once upon a time, the best that I can, this fund's been there since I got here. As far as we could tell, the Secretary of State used to send us voter registration fees, and so we would put them in this fund. Well, when they stopped sending the fees to the individual counties and made us start submitting applications for reimbursement, we still had some money left over. We've held on to that money for I don't know how long. We finally spent it all. So now that fund is gone, but we still have funds available at the state. Now we've put it in the general fund to reimburse us for voter registration. Generally, it's educating our election employees. Vehicle inventory interest fund. Best I can tell you on this is.
Can you back, can you back up just one second, sir?
Sure.
So, that intergovernmental is really what we're talking about on 2,800 or 28,000?
Yes.
Category, and so that's just gonna go, we're gonna do away with this fund, and it's just gonna go into general fund, and we'll use that out there, but it's intergovernmental funded.
The Secretary, Secretary of State holds the funds until we request reimbursement. And so, rather than putting it a separate fund that we don't know that we'll get the funds, we put it in general fund. We budgeted what the Secretary of State says is available to our county for next year, and it's in the general fund.
Thanks.
Vehicle inventory is the tax assessor collector. Several, many years ago, they changed the way that inventory tax on vehicles is run so that the dealers, the vehicle dealers put in an estimated, and then they do a true-up at the end of the year. And from what I understand, this is where these revenues come from. And it is at the discretion generally of the tax assessor collector. Usually she, our particular tax assessor collector, will spend it on parts of equipment, like if there's a new computer that she needs to get, or money counting, or bank software, she'll do a percentage. Sometimes she'll do the whole thing out of vehicle inventory if that's what it's caused. That's, if that's what is causing the cost. Sheriff's Office Crime Fund is, we have an interlocal agreement between the DA, the sheriff's office, and the two cities with regards to seizures of, I wanna say it's a particular nature, it's only the seizures of contraband, like drugs. And so, everybody gets a little percentage of what that, we don't sell it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we don't sell it.
No, I got myself in a pickle there. Can't remember. Oh, but at the same time, we seize the drugs, they have a tendency to have money, and that's what we seize and disperse based on that interlocal contract. And so that's generally where the sheriff's office gets their crime fund from. District Attorney Crime Fund is their share of those funds. Primary Election Services Fund, several years ago, they, the legislature changed it so that we can, like, we charge the city of College Station for their elections, we charge the city of Bryant, we also charge the parties. What, what we charge goes back into this fund, and we're actually choosing to go ahead and leave the fund balance in there of about 65,000 to fund future election equipment possibly needed. So we decided to go ahead and let that fund build up if we could. Next is grant funds. It, you got it? It's a long, it's a, no, we don't have it, do we? Up there, Nina? It's this one. We have estimated how much of each grant, if it's not an October to September grant, how much it's gonna carry forward, and also if we think or know of us getting a grant, like juvenile, because juvenile grants start in September. So we've already budgeted the revenues and budgeted the expenditures on that. The key point to note on grant funds is gonna be what we anticipate transferring. Last time I saw it, Nina, it was 634,000. It won't come up, but it was 634,000, the majority of which is the benefits for the juvenile supplements and for the juvenile department, because we use all the grant funds up, but there's usually a required match. Last. Not quite. All right, General Obligation Debt Service Fund. Sorry, Nina.
Can we go back up one more?
Sure.
MPO?
Yes.
And?
Safe Streets, that grant?
Okay, that, okay, that's, that's one, that one. And then, on the subject of the MPO, and as we go from a, when Brazos Transit District goes to a transit, what do they call, there's a, there's a.
Metropolitan Transit. We go to a metropolitan transit district.
Transit district, yeah.
When we reach a 200,000 population, which we will have.
Yeah, so.
Wait, but when we reach 200,000?
No, we, we do away with the MPO, we go into a metropolitan transit district, and that will enable the Brazos Transit District to have a position on the board. So we will go from five members to six.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and then, there's also a funding requirement that comes in there? Has that been determined yet?
Yeah, we're gonna have to fund the, help fund the Brazos Transit District.
Okay, and then, has that been determined yet?
It's probably gonna be about $200,000 to each entity, both cities and the county, approximately.
Okay, now I have to ask, when, I heard population 200,000, we've been over that.
So it'll, it'll, it'll go into effect, I think, in January of '24.
Okay, we didn't budget any of that. You said 200,000 each, or total? And I can always bug the transit district, I just.
No, I, you probably need to buzz, buzz Dan Rudge.
Okay.
And the, y'all's next agenda is when you're gonna talk about the realignment of the, of the board there?
Yep. That'll happen on our, the meeting on Wednesday.
Anything else on grants? Next we go to the general, excuse me, General Obligation Debt Service Fund. We anticipate about 500,000, well, no, that's not true. We anticipated a little bit, it was, I think, 2 million in reserves, but we only need to budget about 500,000 to balance the debt service fund at this time. Our outstanding debt service principal and interest for next year on general obligation and certificates of obligation is 12,830,000. And last but not least is the Health and Life Insurance Fund. We, I mentioned this the other day when we were going through the general fund. We're estimating the fund balance to be about 4.5 million dollars in that fund, and we've also budgeted to transfer a million if we need to. When we first heard from our consultant back in June, it was estimated to need a 3% increase. That has changed to 5%. A million is probably overkill, but only if we don't need it. It's not overkill if we need it, so. And you never know, particular, well, you never know what's gonna come up, especially emergency or high-risk, high benefit claims. What else we got? I'm sorry? Can tell you that I went ahead and did the revenue budget in the debt service fund to coincide with the calculated debt service rate of, what is it, 401? We did it, yeah, we had it last week, we don't have all that today. Because it's not gonna change.
Yeah, I mean, it was, and I think that's great because we added, well, on the net what we did, I don't, I can't remember what we paid off last year, but I do know.
6 million?
Okay, I mean, we added, so net add was 34 million. And our rate didn't really change significantly.
Our appraised values kept that from happening.
And that's, I mean, not having the revenue capped on that one makes a huge difference for our future as far as how it strategically makes sense for us to use debt service, I think.
We also plan on issuing another 20 million in road bonds for tech stop based on our voter, the general obligation bonds, probably in 2025. Because that's when I got the impression we'll be out.
So there won't be a 20 million for '24 then?
No, he said he could, he could live with 20 million over two years. We do have some other capital funds. You wanna go over those, Nina? So we created three new funds for the new issuance that you mentioned, Commissioner Aldrich. We issued 40 million, 20 million for road bonds, which is, it actually isn't capital because we won't get an asset out of it. It's to do the preliminary work, like environmental and surveys and right-of-way and, I don't even know it all, to get ready for the tech stop projects, but those don't actually increase our assets. We've went ahead and budgeted, I'm gonna have to let Nina do this because she made the spreadsheet, she'll do better at this than I will.
So for the On System Road Bonds, it's a total of 19,800, and this, it was a calculation that is spread throughout the project, seven projects in our Loop East, Relus, Loner Road, North 2018, Bushwellburn, William D. Fitch, and Harvey Road. The only thing that has been paid on these is going to be the debt payments that we had to pay the debt consultants off for their services and fees. The On System Road, total budget of 10,100,000. This is for.
IGN, is what it's gonna be used for.
I'm sorry, for what?
For IGN Road. Carp approved this last Tuesday for design, I think, of it, totaling, I think, maybe 40,000, I can't remember the amount. This is the fund that's gonna be taken out. The next one is gonna be the 2023 Certificates of Obligation. 8 million's gonna go towards the sanctuary remodel, as well as 1.9 towards North Wing, North Wing remodel. And the, we've missed one, 4320, this is a debt that was taken out in 2020, and we still have remaining funds. And so, we have 8.5 scattered between Roden Bridge building of three, renovating the Ag Building, so Roden Bridge crew can go in there while we're renovating the Roden Bridge Building. So, the Ag Building renovation is 300,000. Remodeling the Roden Bridge Building is 2.5 million. We're still working on our beautiful jail kitchen expansion. We're rolling about 941,000 over, as well as, we're still working on the hell repair on the roofs. We're hopefully completing that project this next year, fingers crossed, between the buildings, as well as, we have one item that has not been received at the Constable Precinct, one building of 1,500, as well as two dump trucks that have yet to arrive because we had to order them almost a year in advance. It's gonna take them a year to be built, and so that's 336,000 that we had to put, we took out of that fund because it was obligated towards Roden Bridge heavy equipment.
So on the 2020 COs, we still have 3 million contingency?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And it's very specific on what it can be used for as well.
And all those, yeah, the description determines that.
Yes, sir.
That's why we went ahead. Roden Bridge was specifically mentioned, so we moved that project in there to give those funds.
And is that all, is that all of the total issue when we made the issue back in 2020?
This is the remaining of it. The total amount was, I could tell you that.
It was 25? Was it? 25 million? I can't remember, we were, we were debating between 20 and 25, and I think we did 25.
12 million.
12 million.
Oh, no, 27, I'm sorry. 25 million, you're correct.
Okay, right. So that's the remaining amount, and that will zero that 25 mil out?
Yes, sir.
Are there any additional questions regarding capital projects or?
Special revenues or debt service? I don't know that we have anything for general fund today. We're still waiting on some answers. I know I'm waiting on one for the grants. Couple more. So with this transfer, as well as the amount rolling forward in the general fund, for example, that 9.4 million on Roden Bridge, this gets us to 44 million in expenditures more than revenues in the general fund. So, last week, last Thursday, we talked about expenditures being more than revenues in the general fund for maintenance and operations of approximately 12 million. in the general fund for maintenance and operations of approximately 12 million. Then, we also talked about rolling forward monies for, there's a High Street project with Oracle, there's the 9.4 million for Roden Bridge, and a couple of other ones. We went through the, we had the list and gave it to you. Of course, I'm not gonna be able to find it right now. But, here it is. Tax Office Flat Work, those kinda things that are rolling forward, that's 12,500,000. So, that 12, plus the 12 we were already, that's 24. Plus, the total capital projects that we just went over today before these was another 24 million, correct? So, now, or, no.
19 million.
19 million. So, now, revenues minus, we're in the whole, 44 million dollars. Do you wanna go through fund balance? Fund balance is estimated, I apologize that I was not able to be here for the fund balance policy that we talked about going over in the end of July. Yeah, we can't even put this one up on the screen. I didn't send it to, no, you have it, but I changed it. I changed it. So, as of October 1st, 2022, our fund balance total, not taking anything out of it, was 136 million. That's after actuals for '21, '22. First thing you gotta take out of those things is the non-spendable, which is inventory and prepaid, because those aren't actually cash. That 136 million comes, is, is not just cash. So, you take 3.5 million out for those two things, inventory and prepaid. Then, you have to take out the restricted fund balances, two of which are the first two calculations for American Rescue Plan Act revenue replacement. Plus, the restricted fund balances from the pre-trial bond program and from vital statistics and the Title V, E, excuse me, 4E programs, as well as family protection services. That's 15 million. So, you have 136 minus 3 and 1/2, minus 15, we're down to 117 million in fund balance. Now, we have to take into account the activity that has occurred during '22, '23. One of which was the calculation of the revenue replacement for the American Rescue Plan Act of 7.2 million. So, you have to take that out. The 6 million that we've budgeted in the general fund to use for contingency, we don't tax for that every year. We use fund balance for that, mostly because that way, we don't have to worry about it not getting spent. Also, 5 million for indigent healthcare. As we've talked about, we have to budget 8%, but we never spend 8%. So, we are budgeting 5 million of fund balance so we don't have to tax again for those, that difference. And also, you'll see there's 13 million that we have essentially obligated, meaning we either have gone out for bid, we've advertised that we're coming, that we've gone out for bid, or that we have actually signed contracts on that we are rolling forward of 13.6 million. So, take away all those, which is 24 million, you're down to 85 million. Then, you take out about 25% of the expenditures, actual expenditures from '21, '22, of 27 million. You're down to 57 million in fund balance. Projections for '22, '23 add anywhere from 21 to 25 million back into fund balance. Primary reasons is we're still in the design phase of a lot of our capital expenditures. We got an ME, a BISD, a Sanctuary, a North Wing. We're still in, I'm sorry, but design is extremely less than actual construction. For example, Old Reliance is spending it at least $800,000 a month. And so, what's gonna happen is that those are gonna start drawing down as soon as we get to the construction phase. But we are taking our time as far as, as much as we can in trying to get the construction as smoothly as possible by analyzing as much of the design and contracts as we can.
Gotcha. Can we back up one?
Sure.
Unrestricted, unassigned, uncommitted, spendable fund balance at December, September 30th?
2022.
Okay, on, on the, on the sheet, we got the dates not there.
Right.
We've got-
That's estimated at 2023.
Okay. I just needed to know what-
Without the actual results of the current year?
Right.
Okay. So, the estimate's 80 million.
Actual results of the current year are estimated to be?
21 to 25.
20?
It's the difference between the 139 and the 116 right there. I think I made it equal the projections, the latest ones. So, that's what we would use to fund the, excuse me, the 80 million is what we would use.
So, that's the difference between the 57 and the, uh, 80?
Yes.
Okay.
This is current year estimated, projected results.
So, 77 to 80, right? Very good.
Okay. So, we said capital projects, the transfer, that we would need to transfer from general fund, assuming we got all of our capital projects done, not only the ones that we're rolling forward, but all the new ones also, is 20, 24 million? No, 19. 19 million. So, give or take, 80 million minus 20, that gets us down to 60 million in fund balance. What else? Oh, yeah. Gets us down to 60 million. Any questions on that?
Okay, so, the 20, call it 8 million, that's committed fund balance with the, uh, the policy that we-
That wasn't actually passed.
Okay, right, right. We talked about it, but-
We talked about it. Because the other piece to that policy is if you drop below that, you have to have a plan on when you're gonna put it back. And we didn't talk about that.
Okay.
I'll try it again next year.
Okay. But it's, but it's there in the calculation, so we can use it for planning.
Yes.
And then, but that is available under a quote, "declared emergency" situation?
Yes, sir. And you have access to those funds.
How many, how many days is that of our?
90.
90 days?
And that's what the expenditures act, that's based on the actual expenditures of '21, '22.
So, during an emergency-
An emergency is gonna increase the expenses quite a bit.
Yeah. So, during an emergency, you can use these funds, but you've gotta submit a plan of how you're going to repay those funds?
The fund balance policy that we did not adopt addresses that, yes. And I don't wanna belabor that too much in here because, yeah, it's like if you use so much, you need to, you need to promise yourselves is what it boils down to.
Right.
Your policy is prom, promising yourselves you're gonna put it back within this much time.
Any part of that, I guess if I understand it correctly, the logic is any part of that you don't use, or that you do use, you need to replenish for next year to replace it, or whatever, 25% of the prior year.
We, we didn't talk, we didn't get a chance to talk about it, but it could be, yes, always rolling 25%. So, honestly, so that as ARPA comes down and gets spent, then that number would come down too, because-
Right.
-that includes... No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Actual expenditures in '22, no, it doesn't, we didn't spend any ARPA then.
And so, the 44 million that you gave us on the sheet that we had last time we got together, that's what's in question? And bottom line impact on-
How to fund it, yes.
Bottom line impact on that will be on the 80 million that we see here?
In combination with the tax rate you all choose to set, yes.
Okay. All right, and then, right. Did y'all have anything else? That's, anything else you wanted to present today?
Not today.
Um, a couple of kinda questions that were in my mind. One was, is, uh, got a lot of roof replacement stuff. We have a lot of them as expenses. But I don't know the reimbursement from insurance versus the expenses. And I'm just really looking for kind of a, what was the net cost on that, if we have it?
You mean the net reimbursement? Well, okay, I see what you're saying, the reds.
The net cost, yeah. I'm sure we probably paid more-
Yes, we have.
-than what we were reimbursed for as far as insurance goes.
Yes, we have. I don't, Nina might be able to find that number?
Charles.
Charles is coming.
And we're still, we're still anticipating receipt of proposals on a few of those yet to finish that out. And so, we don't, we don't have real, we provided an update earlier. We can, we can do that again, but it's still inaccurate or incomplete-
Right.
-until we finish those out, Commissioner.
This was a while back.
And it's changed due to some unforeseen conditions and the efficiencies of parceling some of it out separately. And so, it is an ongoing process.
I know several, probably good four or five months ago when we all met regarding roofs, we were already negative 226,000 based on what we have received from insurance claims. And we have spent a lot more since then.
Gotcha.
Now, I was just kinda curious if you had a, I mean, WAG as far as?
I don't, I don't today, but I can try to get that information, kind of an update on where we're at in the next week or so.
And I guess the, the other one, in looking through the capital, um, instead of taking everybody's time up here, I'll visit with y'all individually about that, on, on reserves and what we're doing there as far as commitment of reserves and things. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? Does any department head or elected official want to address the Commissioners Court?
Kyle Hawthorne, 85th District Court. I don't know if this is the right forum to do this in, but we've kinda got pushed into, as you all aware, a little bit of a corner, so to speak. First thing, I wanna apologize for my dress. I had my jury trial fallout today, so didn't have anything to do but come over here and ask y'all questions.
Well, if you'll accept my comparable apologies, then we're okay.
All right, I'll do that. One curious thing, don't have to address it, but the million dollars for the new courtroom, consideration about getting all the district courts on the same floor. From what I've talked, it's been very brief. It's been since they announced that somebody was being appointed to the civil district court. That we looked at, down at the JP Court, from a flow, both for all parties and especially If consideration could be given to converting that JP Court to the new district court, turning the, what's currently the non-built-out courtroom into that JP Court, gets all the courtrooms on the same floor. It gets the security as it relates to that area with our security, it's tied together.